So we're getting close to the start of the meeting at 7:00 PM. If people could come into the room and take their seats, please. So the way this is set up is that people that are non-voters, over to the left where the tables are, if you could sit over there, and then the voters sit in the rest of the room. I'm going to call the Wareham Annual Fall Town Meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, if you could confirm that the warrant for this meeting has been duly posted?
It has been duly posted.
So I'm just confirming, the town clerk says that the warrant has been duly posted. So if everyone could, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started, just some ground rules, so to speak. So this meeting shall be governed by Massachusetts general laws, by our bylaws, by Roberts Rules of Order and town meeting time, but to the extent that they conform to the conditions of the town, and also by my rulings. I stated it earlier, but let me just state this again, that the rows of seats, if you will, are for voters of the town. Anyone that is a non-voter should be sitting over to my left where the tables are. And people, if you want to come in and sit down to make sure that when we do go to vote, your vote is noted. So I do, before we get started, I do want to thank, in addition to the people that are up here on the stage and at the front of the room that make the meeting happen, I'd like to recognize some of the folks that are behind the scenes, so to speak, the IT department, who's hiding in back of the screen, and Wareham Community Television, the town clerk's office, and also to the tellers for this meeting. And just so you know, in terms of the sections of the room, Section 1 is to my right in the front, and also includes any voters that are sitting up here at the front table. Section 2 is to my right in the rear. Section 3 is to my left in the front, and Section 4 is to my left in the rear. So anyone that's standing in the back, if you are voters, you should really come in and take a seat to make sure that when you do vote, that your votes are counted. I have to, as part of our bylaws, I'm required to do what's called the roll call of the department heads. So I will call out those names, sort of in alphabetical order. Administration.
Yeah.
Accounting.
Yes.
Assessors.
Yeah.
Collector, treasurer. Information technology, I note, is here. Town clerk, I note, is here. Planning, zoning. Emergency medical services.
Yeah.
Harbor master slash natural resources.
Yeah.
Police.
Yeah.
Inspections department.
Yeah.
Municipal maintenance.
Yeah.
Board of Health.
Yeah.
Council on Aging.
Yeah.
Library.
Yeah.
And School Department. Thank you. I would like to take this moment, I would like to take a moment now to have the Chair of the Select Board, and then after that, the Chair of the Finance Committee introduce their respective boards, and also to make an opening statement if they so wish.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. First of all, I'd like to introduce my members, my peers, Trisha Wertz, Alan Slaven, Ron Bessie, and Jared Chadwick. On behalf of my fellow Select Board members, good evening. Many of you have been regular attendees at town meetings, where the business of the town is discussed and decided. Many believe, as I do, that town meeting is the purest form of democracy, as the town meeting is the legislative body of our government. There's another extremely important segment of our government, and that is the more than 160 unpaid volunteers who populate our more than 30 boards and commissions. Wareham is an unusual community, in that we have 54 miles of coastline, almost 2,000 properties classified as second homes, over 1,000 mobile home units which pay an excise tax, not a property tax, and a population that more than doubles in the summer. We have free concerts and fireworks, our own YMCA, the Onset Bay Center, which offers all sorts of opportunities like sailing lessons and how-to-go co-hogging. We have parades and festivals which honor our rich cultural heritage. We have several youth sports groups supported by parents and grandparents. We have a hospital, two libraries, two golf courses, miles of hiking trails, opportunities for kayaking, and some of the finest saltwater fishing in Massachusetts. We have a town forest and hundreds of acres of cranberry bogs. We also happen to have spectacular sunsets, in case any of you saw it tonight. We have a mall, as well as an industrial park. We have buildings that predate the American Revolution. In other words, we seem to have it all. However, make no mistake about the issues facing our town. Climate change, which will affect the neighborhoods which border Buzzards Bay, a budget constrained by the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2, capital needs on an ongoing basis, as well as extraordinary needs, such as a new police station and an aging sewer infrastructure. There continue to be new laws and regulations passed by either the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or the federal government. We must be able to address those in a forward-looking manner. We have some tough challenges ahead. The greatest is how do we best serve the residents of the town and keep it the wonderful community that we're all very proud of. Thank you for being here this evening to support our community, and let's continue to keep this form of government working for the betterment of all of us. Thank you.
I recognize the Chair of the Finance Committee, Norma Skoggan.
Thank you. I'd like to start by introducing the members of my committee. Sitting next to me is my Vice Chair, Matt Rose. And down below, we have Dom Camerano, Julie Moran, Heidi Churchill, and Jody Smith. Unfortunately, Jerry Stefanski could not be with us tonight, but he's very much an important member of this committee. And on behalf of the Finance Committee, I want to say good evening and thank you for being here. Your presence is an essential part of this major endeavor we have called Wareham Town Government. We, the voters, are the legislature. And we, it is the Finance Committee's solemn duty to recommend the actions we believe town meeting should do, so as to get our business done in the best way possible, given our responsibilities and our resources, for the good of our community. And a community really is what we are. The dictionary defines community as a group of people living in the same place or having a particular characteristic in common. Well, obviously, we all live in Wareham, so that part of it is a given. But I think we also have at least one characteristic in common, and it is that we step up. This town runs, as Madam Chair of the Select Board just said, really on volunteer power. I would not be surprised to learn that almost everybody in this room has served either on a town committee now or in the past, or has volunteered with one of our many wonderful community organizations, like our youth sports leagues, the Land Trust, Meals on Wheels, or that you've helped out with the Veterans Day Parade, or the Cape Verdean Festival, or the Pan Mass Challenge, or maybe you've just quietly helped a neighbor in need. That's the kind of people we are. And tonight, you're here. You're taking up your time and your attention to do the business of the town, so that we can continue moving forward. As we proceed through the evening's business, I hope we can all keep in mind that at the end of the day, we are in this together. I hope we will treat each other with respect and kindness, even when we disagree, which we will. Thank you for making Wareham a community in all the best ways.
Just one other note. I would like to reiterate that non-voters should not be sitting in the two sections directly in front of me. If you are a non-voter, you should be sitting to my left, where those tables are, over by the, that back wall. So anyone, any people that are non-voters need to move in that direction, please. Again, before we actually get started on the substance of the matters before us, let me just say that by tradition, we have limited debate to five minutes for the petitioner to speak, and two minutes each for all subsequent speakers. I would ask that, before you speak, that you please state your name, so we have that in our town meeting record. And I would like to echo what has been said by the Chair of the FinCom and the Chair of the Select Board. Please treat the other voters, who are your neighbors and fellow citizens and guest speakers, with respect and courtesy, such as you would expect for yourself. We are here to debate the issues before the meeting and not to personally attack each other in order to show what I think is Wareham in its best light. We are going to start with what's called a consent agenda. These should be items that are fairly routine, or items that we will be passing over. So I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. So the consent agenda, I think everyone can see this. I'm going to read it. I apologize for being tedious about that. But the motion on the consent agenda, I move that the town pass over Article 1, approve and fund FY24 capital plans; Article 2, transfer of available funds; Article 3, prior year bills and deficits; Article 7, harbor service permit receipts reserved for appropriation accounts; debt payment; Article 30, amend the charter; Article 31, amend bylaws, affordable housing; and that the town further study Article 25, amend zoning bylaws, Section 590, solar energy; and that the town approve Article 4, PEG access receipts reserved for appropriations by transferring the sum of $214,999.52 to the Wareham Community Television from the PEG access receipts reserved for appropriation account; Article 14, easement agreement with N-Star-Eversource/Hammond School, as printed in the warrant; and Article 27, bylaw corrections/ stormwater permit, as printed in the warrant. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read each of these articles. I'll give just a very brief explanation of what they are. If anyone wishes to have them fully considered, just stand, state your name, and state "hold." So Article 1, approve and fund FY24 capital plan. The reason that this is proposed to be passed over is that in order to do that, we need to have certified free cash certified by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that has not happened, so we can't act on that. Article 2, transfer of available funds, has the same issue. We need to have certified free cash from the Commonwealth. We do not have that. Article 3, prior year bills and deficits, correct me if I'm stating correctly, but I think that the issue with the prior years is that there are no prior year bills that we need to consider, so we're going to pass that over. And with regard to Article 7, harbor services permit receipts, again, we will be passing that over. The town further study Article 25, amend zoning bylaws, Section 590, solar energy. The reason that this is proposed as part of the consent agenda to be further study is that recently, the town has received an opinion from the Attorney General's Office, very recently, that needs to be considered before going forward on anything having to do with solar energy. Article 4 is a routine article, PEG access receipts to Wareham Community Television. The funds are there and available and appropriate to be transferred. Article 14 is an easement agreement for the electric company over property of the Hammond School to provide better service to the people in that area. And Article 7 is really a, it's just a correction, if you will, because right now, it says that...
Yeah, they did the Board of Health.
Right, right now, it says the Board of Health, and it should really be the Planning Board. So Article 1, any hold. Article 2, any hold. Article 3, any hold. Article 7, any hold. Article 30, any hold. Article 31, any hold. Further study, Article 25, any hold. Article 4, any hold. Article 14, any hold. Article 27, any hold. So having heard no holds on these, the consent agenda motion is in order to be acted on. All those in favor of the motion as read previously regarding the consent agenda, please, made and seconded, please signify by stating "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating "nay." So it passes unanimously by a voice vote. Proceeding now to the articles that have been selected by our random process. The first random lottery, the first article is Article number 10, the Mark's Cove Vista. Is there a motion on that article?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund the sum of $250,000 for a grant to Wareham Land Trust to purchase the 3.58 acre parcel, Wareham Assessors Map 54, Lot 1009, at 120 Kermit's Road, Wareham, Mass, and further to require a conservation restriction on said parcel to be held by the Wareham Conservation Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on Article 10. May I have the vote and the recommendation of the Select Board?
4-0-0.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted to recommend favorable action, 7-0-0. The Finance Committee recommends the use of CPC funds for the Mark Cove Vista project. With the funds available and usable for specific projects, we cannot think of a better use. This will protect 3.5 acres overlooking Mark's Cove, protect various natural resources, and preserving a small section of our coastline. It sits adjacent to town-owned land and near existing walking trails and will be open to the public.
Yes, gentlemen, at the microphone.
Yes, David Hurd, Chair of CPC. And CPC voted 4-0-0 on all four of these accounts. As far as providing a definition or description of what's going on, I'd like to let the proponents of the particular articles take my five minutes and speak. Thank you.
That's fine. So I recognize Nancy McHale from the Wareham Land Trust.
Good evening. My name is Nancy McHale. I'm the Treasurer of the Wareham Land Trust. And I would ask that the body actually, I would like to amend the article or the motion that was written and refer to the motion that is now on the screen, that I move that the town vote to appropriate from Community Preservation...
That's actually, the motion that's on the screen is what you want voted, is that correct?
That is exactly correct.
Okay, so we're all set on that.
We're all set on that.
That's been moved and seconded, so if you want to speak to the substance, please go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't the motion as was read originally, because that was the wrong one. Okay? But you've got what's on the screen.
No, what was read was up here, I believe.
Was what's on the screen.
Right.
Okay, terrific. This is a great project, in my opinion. The town will hold the conservation restriction on this beautiful piece of property and keep it forever wild. I'm going to defer to our land acquisition chair, Bob Gleason, and give him the rest of the remaining time on the five minutes. Thank you.
Madam Moderator, I'm sorry. That is not what was read. What's on the screen is not what was read.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that, then. So...
So is your motion as printed on the screen?
Second.
So you withdraw your previous motion. There's been a motion made and seconded.
Withdraw my previous motion.
Thank you. You made a good point, that the motion as appears on the screen is what is before this body. So Mr. Gleason, go ahead.
Okay. Bob Gleason, as Chairman of the Wareham Land Trust Acquisition Committee, I'm excited about the preservation of Mark's Cove Vista property at 120 Kermit's Road. The project will keep the mixture of forest and salt marsh forever wild. The Conservation Commission has agreed to hold a conservation restriction on this partial, ensuring it will remain public, open space forever. The acquisition will extend the existing conservation lands of the Mark's Cove Conservation Area, which are owned and managed cooperatively by the Town of Wareham, Massachusetts Audubon, Buzzards Bay Coalition, the Wildlands Trust, and the Wareham Land Trust. Mark's Cove Vista lies within the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program priority and estimated habitats, and is entirely over Plymouth, Carver, Soul, Source, Aquifer. Preservation will benefit the town with a publicly accessible path to the edge of the marsh with beautiful views of Buzzards Bay and the preserved lands to the north. We hope to have a viewing bench at the end of the pre-existing trail and possibly a short loop trail. If we're not able to protect this property, there will be a very good chance a house or two will be built there, and we will lose the protection for the marsh and the public access forever. We have done our due diligence and had the property appraised and an environmental assessment and survey done. We've applied for a state conservation partnership grant that could possibly reduce the funds we need from CPC by approximately $125,000. We have had tremendous support from the neighborhood and friends of the Wareham Land Trust and all the town departments we've presented it to. I urge you to vote yes for Article 10. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 10? Seeing no one standing, we'll proceed to vote on Article 10. It requires a majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article 10, please signify by stating "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating "no." It passes unanimously. The next article is Article number 29, which is a petition article. Is there a motion from the petitioner on this? Yes, Mrs. Sexton, please.
Thank you. I move the town to accept a granite bench as a gift from Mr. Ciro Tenaglia in memory of his wife, Aunt Nettalisa Tenaglia, to be located at Swift's Beach. The Tenaglia family will pay for the concrete foundation for both the gifted bench and for an existing bench that has fallen into disrepair, the gifted bench itself and the cost of the installation on map block and lot unit 50/B2.
So motion made on Article 29, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
The Select Board chose no action.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends to refer this to town meeting 7-0-0.
So before the petitioner does get started, I am informed that the, because the town administrator has the control of the property of the Town of Wareham, that this would be in the nature of a resolution or directive to the town administrator. But please, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask the body if they would indulge... I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask the body if they would indulge Mr. Tenaglia and his daughter to speak. They are non-residents, but Mr. Tenaglia has owned property down here for over sixty years.
I'll recognize Mr. Tenaglia.
And his daughter, thank you.
But before you speak, if you could also state your name other than Mr. Tenaglia.
Okay, I'm Claire Tenaglia, and this is my dad, Zero. Very simple, my dad would like to gift a granite bench in memory of my beautiful mother, Aunt Annetta Tenaglia, who was a mainstay at Swift Beach for decades. My mother loved sitting at the beach, looking out over the water with family, friends, and neighbors at all times throughout the many years. My dad has offered to pay for the repairs to the existing concrete, the concrete pads, and the gifted bench.
Is...
Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article Twenty-Nine? Lady at the microphone, please hit your name and then go ahead.
Jean Welch. I live in the Swift Beach area neighborhood. And the bench that's down there is used by many people who can't physically get onto the beach. It's right at the end of Swift Beach Road, and there's one beach there already, but the ground under it is crumbling. We go down there a lot. Some people were down there tonight watching the sunset. The Tenaglia family lives in that road area and have been married, were married for seventy-two years before she passed away in January. The bench is used by people who may not be able to physically get onto the beach. It's right at the end. You can sit on the beach if you're in a wheelchair. You can get out of the wheelchair, move onto the beach, onto the bench, and enjoy the beach just like everybody else, except you don't have to get onto the sand and walk around with physical limitations. The bench that's there probably holds two people, maybe three. Adding another bench would allow family members of people who are physically unable to get onto the beach to sit with them and enjoy the beach just like everybody else. It's an open road, get to the end, enjoy the beach, and then you don't have to physically get onto the sand. And the Tenaglia family has been a mainstay of that whole neighborhood for years, first people that we met when we moved there. And it would be a great commemoration to his wife to be able to have the bench down there, and it would allow residents of Wareham to be able to use more space at the beach without having to go onto the sand. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, lady behind you.
Donna Fox-Ruben. I can appreciate how important this bench is to the family, but I think the issue exceeds this specific situation. The town has a concern about the liability and maintenance associated with these gifts. And rather than looking at it as a problem, perhaps there's a way to solve it. Would it be possible for the board, or whatever body it is, to establish a guidance on what these gifts must be like, whether it's granite, how big it can be, what it's made of, et cetera, et cetera, and address the issue beyond the current installation to address future maintenance and the consequences of failure for maintaining it into the future? Because there are two sides to both stories. So, I'm just proposing an alternative way to honor this family's wishes, but overcome the concerns of the town at the same time.
Thank you. Mrs. Slaven.
Yes, thank you, Sandy Slaven. This bench is being proposed in the velocity zone. Can someone tell me if there's been any issue with the bench that's there now? It's my understanding there has been times it's been washed over, and I just want to know if there is an issue of installing a bench in the velocity zone, because this has not come before conservation. And I have to say, I am a Chair of Conservation, so I would have been recognized if this had come before us for an installation. But my question is, has there been damage done or an issue with the bench that's there now with the tides and the heavy surf?
If there's anyone here that wishes to answer that question, Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Menard, do we ever have anything with that bench? Yeah, sorry.
You need to come up and speak to the microphone.
You've got a good, strong voice, but the microphone's bad.
David Menard, Municipal Maintenance Director. One on Swiss Neck during that storm, we had one washout underneath it, and we had to kind of just bring it back and put some more sand underneath the foundation. It did wash down on one storm.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Russell?
Urban Russell, Precinct Six, East Wareham. Yes, I think that I fail to see any detriment or fault in this action being taken, and I really like to commend, I commend Mr. Taggula for trying to make a memorable tribute to his wife. I, being a widow myself, recognizes that human element, and I see no loss at all from the town, on the town's part. So, I think we ought to approve this overwhelmingly and continue on wishing him a good life. Thank you.
Yes, lady at the microphone.
Yes, my name's Emery Pickett. I've been a lifetime resident of Swift Beach, and these folks have been there for many, many years. I commend him for doing this, but most importantly, no one in the town has worried about fixing the problem of the foundation or whatever that's been washed away. He's going to spend his own money to fix all that and then put the bench up. So, he's going to better it by doing that. So, I think that's commendable for him and his family, and I think it would be a benefit for the Swift Beach area.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Twenty-Nine? Seeing no one else standing, we'll go to a vote on Article Twenty-Nine. The motion appears up on the screen. All those in favor of the motion as appears up on the screen, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed, please signify by stating no. It passes by a majority, voice vote. I didn't say this previously, but I will say it now because you all remind me. Please refrain from clapping, booing, hissing, whatever. But thank you for the reminder. So, the next article is Article Twenty-Three, which is zoning bylaws, Article Three and Five, Wireless Communications.
Madam Moderator, Michael King, Chair of the Wareham Planning Board.
If you could just speak up just a bit, Mr. King. Thank you.
If there's a problem. At a town hearing held on October sixteenth, with the vote by the Planning Board of Wareham...
Before we get to that, I will need the report of the Planning Board. I actually need a motion on Article Twenty-Three.
On Article Twenty-Three, okay. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this article...
No, no, no.
You need the actual report?
No, no, stay right there. What I need is a motion, the motion first, on Article Twenty-Three, and then we'll get to the report of the Planning Board.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw articles Three and Five, Wireless Communications, as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded on Article Number Twenty-Three. Do I have a report of the Planning Board?
You do.
Please.
At a hearing held on October sixteenth, 2023, with a vote by the Planning Board of Wareham, this article was recommended for favorable action. The document has been on file with the Town Clerk's Office as well as posted on the website. The Planning Board vote was five zero zero to recommend.
And before I get to any comments that you might have, is there a report and recommendation of the Select Board?
The Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
And is there a report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Yes, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends this amendment as it will help avoid construction of additional cell tower poles by requiring, excuse me, co-location of wireless communication systems, including town emergency notification systems on existing cell tower poles. Finance Committee recommends approval of this Article Six zero zero.
Thank you. Mr. King, you still have the floor if there's anything further that you wish to say on this article?
No, actually, what was going to be said has been said by the members, so we're good.
Is there anything further to be said on Article Twenty-Three? Seeing no one standing, we'll proceed to vote on Article Twenty-Three. This is a zoning bylaw amendment, so it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Twenty-Three, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed, please signify by stating no. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. The next article is Article Seventeen, MGL Forty-One, Section One Ten A, Saturday Offices. Is there a motion on Article Seventeen?
I move that the town approve as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article Number Seventeen is a report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
And is there a report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action seven zero zero. This change would only impact town elections. Saturday hours could still be necessary for state and federal elections, but the change should be approved.
Is there anything further to be said on Article Seventeen? I see no one standing, so we'll go to a vote on Article Seventeen. All those in favor of the motion on Article Seventeen, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed to the motion on Article Seventeen, please signify by stating no. It passes by a majority, voice vote. Article Eighteen is next, delete zoning bylaw, Section One Two One Six Point Nine. Is there a motion, motion on Article Eighteen?
Madam Moderator, Michael King, Planning Board. I move that the town approve this as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on Article Eighteen. May I have the report of the Planning Board?
Yes, ma'am. The Planning Board, at a hearing held on October sixteenth, with a vote by the Planning Board of Wareham, this article is recommended for favorable action. The document has been on file with the Town Clerk's Office as well as posted website. This section exempts special permit applicants from having to meet the performance standards listed in zoning bylaws, Article Twelve. The Board determined there was no reason the performance standards of Article Twelve of the zoning bylaws should not apply to special permits, and so recommends a positive vote for deletion of this restriction. The Planning Board finds this article requires a two-thirds vote, and the Planning Board recommends approval of the article by a vote of five zero zero.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action on Article Eighteen of four zero zero.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this Article Six zero zero. The Finance Committee recommends it because this amendment to Article Twelve will ensure that projects requiring a special permit abide by the Article Twelve performance standards, which will help preserve existing trees and forests, protect the water quality of our fragile ecosystem, and otherwise encourage best management practices in land development.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Eighteen? Seeing no one standing, we'll go to a vote on Article Eighteen. This is also a zoning bylaw change, so it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article Eighteen, please signify by stating aye. Any opposed to the motion, please signify by stating no. Passes unanimously on a voice vote. Yes, Mr. King.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town approve amending zoning bylaw Article Five, large battery storage, as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article Number Twenty-Four. May I have the report of the Planning Board?
The Planning Board held a public hearing on October sixteenth, with a vote by the Planning Board of Wareham. This article is recommended for favorable action. The document has been on file with the Town Clerk's Office as well as posted on the website. This article adds a new section five ninety-seven in zoning bylaw. Article Five, a large solar battery energy storage systems, also known as BESS. Since the State Attorney General has opined that battery storage systems are protected as part of the solar protections under MGL Chapter Forty-A, Section Three, we add regulations under the solar bylaw to control where and how battery storage systems are committed when cited with solar fields. The Planning Board finds this article requires a two-thirds vote, and the Planning Board recommends approval by a vote of five zero zero.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board on Article Twenty-Four?
Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee on Article Twenty-Four?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this Article Six zero zero. They believe this amendment creates a comprehensive framework governing installation of battery storage system based on current knowledge of this emerging technology, which will also balance the need to provide for the safety and protection of the Wareham community and its sensitive resources.
Is there anything further to be said on Article Twenty-Four?
My name is Dr. Cadillo. I'd like to know if this is going to cost the taxpayers of Wareham, how much it's going to cost the taxpayers of Wareham?
So, if there's anyone that's available to answer that question, please speak up.
Michael King, Wareham Planning Board. No, there is no cost to the Wareham citizens. This is...
Who's paying for this?
There is no paying for it. It's just a better understanding of the technology of batteries, how they're placed in the town, and how they affect or don't affect the welfare of the town's people. So, there is, there is no cost associated with this.
Who's paying for this?
There's no cost. There's nobody to pay for it. You want, okay.
Sherry Quirk. I'm also on the Wareham Planning Board. I'm an associate member. I was one of the people involved in drafting this. This is a regulatory action, so it's the Planning Board acting as a regulator, looking at applications coming before it. And if there are costs to be incurred for doing that, the developers, the applicants bringing forward the applications pay those. So, this is a zero cost for the people of Wareham.
Does the state pay in anything?
Annie Hayes, Fifty-Two Farmers Lane. I would say that beside not being a cost to the townspeople, it's a saving for the townspeople, because this article is designed to protect the groundwater and the aquifer that supplies eighty percent of our faucets, all the water we drink and bathe in, et cetera. And that will cost, as we know with water treatment costs, protecting the groundwater, protecting the aquifer is a huge savings to the townspeople. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article Twenty-Four? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thomas Vicki, Precinct 3. I guess I have an issue with Paragraph 5, which says, "Sufficient water shall be available to the Wareham and Onset Fire Department at the site to enable firefighters to address fire events." I'm concerned that we're fighting an electrical fire with water, and I'm wondering why we're not using dry chemical or foam to fight these fires, and that the addition of a body of water on the site may pose significant electrical hazards.
Sherry Quirk again. This particular provision was added at the suggestion of the Fire Marshal's Office, Massachusetts Fire Marshal's Office, noting that in some cases, battery fires need to be put out by some amount of water, and also noting that it has been an issue in some cases that no water has been available at the site. So this is the recommendation of the Massachusetts Fire Marshal.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 24?
Annie Hayes, 52, Farmer's Lane. I would also say that firefighting foam has been studied extensively and is often banned because of the PFAS that it contains, and that firefighters have had a lot to say about not using it.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 24?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to, some assurance that these batteries are made in the USA and don't come from China in any way.
Thank, thank you. Anything further to be said on Article 24? Seeing no one else standing, we'll go to a vote on Article 24. Again, a zoning bylaw change requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 24, as appears on our PowerPoint, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no.
No.
I declare that it passes by two-thirds, a majority by voice vote. The next article is Article 22, zoning bylaws Article 15, land use permit clarification. Is there a motion on Article 22?
Madam Moderator, Michael King, Wareham Planning Board.
Yes, go ahead.
I move that the town meeting vote to approve Article 22 to amend Article 15 of the zoning bylaws as printed in the warrant with the following changes. Delete the first paragraph of Section 152.1, Establishment and Composition. Add under the Powers section, Wareham Planning Board herein after W P B. Add in Section 1521.2, Wareham Select Board, herein after W S B.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article 22. May I have the report of the Planning Board?
Planning Board. Sorry, I never on the screen. We've detected just a small Scrivener's error on second line item down. Delete the first paragraph of Section 152.1. That should read 152.1.1.
So you're withdrawing your previous motion and making this motion? Is there a second on the motion with the Scrivener's error correction?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion made and, made and seconded with that correction. So I think we're at the report of the Planning Board.
The Planning Board held a public hearing on this article on August 14th, 2023, which has continued to October 16th, 2023. The complete, the complete, this is a complete redraft of zoning Article 15 to expand it from just a site plan review process to further describe the land use permitting process in whole, all the way from pre-application to the boards that hear applications to the term of each permit. Article is partnered with draft rules and regulations that the boards are considered now key improvements are: completeness standard, performance guarantees, enhanced review criteria, design review for all large projects. The Planning Board finds this article requires a two-thirds vote, and the Planning Board recommends approval of Article 22 with a vote of 500.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board on Article 22?
Select Board recommends favorable action 400.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee on Article number 22?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this Article 600. As this amendment will streamline the land use permitting process, clarify or reduce ambiguities about the types of permits required, and explain the process and criteria which must be met to obtain them.
Is anything further to be said on Article number 22? Seeing no one standing, we'll go to a vote on Article number 22. Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 22, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Article number nine, which is number Six Chapel Lane. Is there a motion on Article number nine?
Madam Moderator, I moved that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Reserve Fund, the sum of $150,000, for a grant to Six Chapel Lane LLC, located at Six Chapel Lane, Wareham, for the construction of six affordable rental housing units, and further to require the affordable housing restriction on the three buildings at this location.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article number nine. May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 400.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommended favorable action 421.
Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on Article number nine? Yes, Mrs. Slaven.
Thank you, Sandy Slaven. I am the Treasurer CPC, and we voted 400 to recommend this and bring it forward. There is, the applicant is here and wishes to address the board, so I give the five minutes from CPC to them, and the person doing the representation is not a resident of Wareham, and I wish the body to allow her to speak.
Yes, that permission's granted.
I'm a lifelong resident here. We purchased a property over on Chapel Lane, and we're looking to construct six affordable units. And we're looking for support from all you town voters. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
And so my understanding is you're representative who I've given permission to speak. If you could state your name and your name, please, for the record.
Yes, hi, I'm Lynn Sweet. I'm with LDS Consulting Group out of Wellesley. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Beekman. We've been working with him for several years now, and we're really proud of this project. We have had town support in permitting the project for six affordable rental units with three bedroom, three bedrooms in each unit. Unfortunately, due to the changes in the economics of financing with increases to interest rates, we are coming before you to try and close the gap on the numbers so that we can put a shovel in the ground. Mr. Beekman had tremendous support with the Board of Selectmen in permitting the project, as well as he had 20 to 30 letters of support during the zoning Board of Appeals hearings on this project as well. So we're hoping for, I'm here to answer any questions you have about the, the numbers or the motion. Thank you.
So let me, I was a bit remiss on that. Let me ask for the report and recommendation of the Select Board.
Sorry, 400, favorable action.
And the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted 421, favorable action.
So Mr. Camerano, I noticed that you're standing. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Don Camerano. The only thing I do have to say is I, you know, I was the Finance Committee that voted against it. As everyone knows, I've voted against these things before. I just have a hard time swallowing CPC money going to a profitable business, okay? It's our tax money, and we're giving it away to someone who's going to actually make a profit. Even though affordable housing is what we need, it's still business for profit. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article nine? There are some people, voters, that are also waiting to be recognized, so I'm going to do that. The lady to my right, who's standing to the, yeah, go ahead.
A clarification, I'm requesting a clarification. Where are we as far as affordable housing? It seems like all we do is play catch-up, and many other communities seem to not to have to face building and building and building and people selling off their land so that we can have more affordable housing. And also, people coming in from outside of Wareham. Don't we have any construction companies in Wareham?
So if you could, I'm sorry to interrupt you. If you could state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle Rose. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm asking for clarification. Just, can anybody tell me where we stand?
Is there, is there anyone here that would, wishes to answer the question? I think the town planner is coming forward.
He raised his hand. Oh.
Yes, Mr. Bushman.
To speak to the question, we have just gotten a raise in the number of year-round units to 10,000, which means we need 1,000 units of affordable housing, and right now we have 800. So we're short on the number of units that are required for the 10% required by the state 40B affordable housing bylaw.
Thank you. And behind the petitioner, the woman behind the petitioner, recognize you. You have the floor.
Hi, my name's Stacey Smith, excuse me. I live directly across the street from this proposed project. I'm opposed to the size and the location of this project. However, as I must state of the context of this article, my primary objection is this is a private for-profit project under the guise of affordable housing. We are supposed to believe that $3,100 is affordable. We're told we're in the Boston market when calculating market value for rent determined by housing and urban development. Families with vouchers will pay $3,100 a month. These units in this project are nothing more than stacked apartments. These are not single-family homes. We're told the project is short on financing, according to the presentation given to FinCom on 9/27/2023. This project originally was to be privately funded. We were told it was not going to require any public funding when it was presented to the Select Board for a friendly 40B vote. However, like they said, due to the economic downturn, this $2.1 million project, which was supposed to support $1.4 million of debt, is approximately $700,000 short. This shortfall now has to be met with a combination of public funding, both state and local. The article before us this evening is to vote on whether or not to approve $150,000 of community preservation funds under affordable housing. My question is this: Why isn't the project being cut back to fit within a budget? Much like we all have to do, when we can't afford to do something, we either have to table it for when we have the funds, or change the plan so that we can afford it. I understand that I will more than likely be called a nimby, someone who doesn't want not in my backyard. However, I support real affordable housing in an area that allows for space for families to have their children, enjoy the outside, not just a parking lot. I support landlords who want to charge affordable rents, not the ones that rely on and blame the Boston market for the rents that they seek. I support responsible businesses who operate within a budget and don't ask for public handouts when their aspirations are larger than their checkbooks. These six affordable units are a drop in the bucket to meeting our percentage of affordable housing. I would prefer to see these funds spent elsewhere in the future where they may have a much larger impact. I encourage you all to vote no on this article. Thank you.
Yes, the gentleman behind the petitioner.
My name is Carl Schultz. I'm chairman of the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust. First, I'd like to speak in favor of the application. We've been working with Mr. Bushman for the past year to support and move this project forward. I would like to speak to the question raised about local developers. Mr. Bushman is a resident of the town and is a local developer, and is working with the town to add units. To speak to Mr. Camerino's question, there are very limited not-for-profit companies coming forward, offering to build properties in town. We need to build properties. We need to provide affordable housing. This is a great opportunity, and the project, I think, deserves our support. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman behind you with the blue jacket?
Gerard Cadillo. If this town really wants to do something about affordable housing, they should work on cutting real estate taxes, especially for the elderly people of this town. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And Mr. Russell?
Yes, Irvin Russell. I'm an abutter to this project, and I have been an abutter or closely related to Mr. Bushman, and as a neighbor, he is impeccable. As a landlord and property owner, there is no better person, I believe, on this planet that maintains their property so well and is so respectful to their tenants. You know, I have been experiencing that over the years. Our affordable housing situation is going to, has to be confronted by our housing authority as an element that needed to be addressed. There should have been a public housing authority addressing HUD and being able to manufacture or create a large complex of affordable housing within this community. I mean, we've misplaced so many thousands of people, our residents, because of the fact of unavailable affordable housing. This is a small little aspect of trying to acquire affordable housing, but it's a national issue, but every little element is worth its effort. And I commend Mr. Bushman for his work on it, and I think this body ought to approve it overwhelmingly and pursue, keep pursuing affordable housing for this town, and I think the housing authority is...
Thirty seconds, Mr. Russell.
Needs to be the lead focus in dissolving our housing authority program, affordable housing project. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman behind you in the blue shirt?
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name's Corey Allen, resident of Chapel Lane here in Wareham, and I just want to say I'm voicing my support for this project and for this vote to go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And gentleman behind you, you have the floor.
Power lead is 14, Corey Drive. The developer in the town are putting up 16% of the money. Where's the other 84% coming from? And if it's a loan, which is based on interest rates, which, for which he's asking for more money, and interest rates fluctuate, and the interest rates go down, and his cost goes down, does the town get his money back on the CPC, or does that go to his benefit?
If anyone wishes to answer the question?
So the total project costs are $2.1 million. We have plans to secure more money from...
We have plans to secure more money from a state housing finance agency for mass housing under the neighborhood stabilization fund. And in doing that, Mr. Bechman will be profiting, partnering with a not-for-profit entity as well. In addition to that, he has put his own funds into the money. Nine, nine percent of the development costs are directly from him in addition to his sweat equity on the project. At the end of the day, we will be financing probably about forty, sixty percent of the project. We're hoping to finance through a conventional bank. Mr. Bechman also chose, instead of what was required under the statute, to finance to income restrict all six units rather than just two of the units under the comprehensive permit. So in addition to the numbers changing, he is also, is, is giving up affordability on all of the units, and we're looking to make this a profit, not-for-profit partnership to make this project work. Without all of these different sources of funding, unfortunately, the project is, is possibly not going to get built. It's also, was the site of a very derelict church building that was taken down. It was a blight on the neighborhood. So anyway, hopefully that answers the question about where the different funds are coming from.
Thank you. Mrs. Slaven.
Thank you. Sandy Slaven. Just to remind the body, we recently approved CPA funding for two for-profit affordable housing projects. So this is not unique. I do recommend that we do pass this and provide the funding to support this affordable units. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article nine? Seeing no one standing, we'll proceed to vote on Article nine, requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article nine, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no.
No.
The, the, the chair is in doubt, so I'm going to call for a, the tellers to count
the vote.
Is it a two-thirds vote?
No, it's a majority.
All those in favor of the motion under Article nine, please signify by stating your, by raising your voting cards. Teller for section one, which includes the voters also up here at the front of the room.
Section number two, the right rear.
Section three, the front on the left.
Section four, on the left in the rear.
Say again?
Three, six.
Thank you. All those opposed to the motion under Article nine, please raise your cards to signify no. Twenty-six. Section number two.
Twenty.
Twenty, two zero. Section number three.
Ten.
Section number three.
Ten.
Ten. Section number four in the back.
Nineteen.
One-nine, nineteen. The ayes are one oh six, the noes are seventy-five. So we'll proceed now to, proceed now to the next article, which is Article number six, harbor services permit receipts, et cetera. Is there a motion on Article six?
Madam Moderator, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $5,000 from harbor services permit receipts reserved for appropriations account to be transferred to the harbor master maintenance and improvement account or to take any actions related thereto.
Second. I move that the town approve as printed in the warrant. Second.
All right, we have multiple motions, but I think they amount to the same thing. So we have a, a motion made and seconded to approve Article six as printed in the warrant, which is a $5,000 transfer. May I have the report and the recommendation of the select board?
Select board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
May I have the report and recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommended favorable actions six zero zero. Finance committee recommendation, this article is a housekeeping transfer for harbor service permit receipts to pay for the year-round dockage necessary for the harbor master to keep vessels, vessels available for dispatch.
Is there anything further to be said on Article six?
No, I think the finance committee report was succinct.
Okay. So seeing no one standing wa, waiting to be recognized, we'll go to a vote on Article six, which is by a majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article six as printed in the warrant, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no. It passes by unanimously by voice vote. The next article is Article number twenty-eight regarding Candle Paper Lane, which is a petition article. Is the petitioner here?
My name is Roger Mello. I live on Candle Paper Lane, and today I'm here to see if the town will vote to accept the layout of Candle Paper Lane in West Wareham. A little history of the development.
No, no, sir. So here's how this goes. You will make a motion. I'll ask for a second. If there's a second, then I will ask for the vote and recommendation of the select board.
Thank you.
The vote and recommendation of the finance committee, and then we'll go from there. So if you could start with making your motion under Article twenty-eight.
To see if the town will vote to accept the layout of Candle Paper Lane, West Wareham.
Is there a second on the motion? Motion made and seconded to accept Candle Paper Lane, may I have the vote and recommendation of the select board?
The select board asks for further study.
P zero one.
Pardon me, I'm, I'm sorry, interrupted you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee refers to town meeting six zero zero.
Before we get started, and I'm sure town council will let me know if I'm out of line, with regard to the town accepting layouts of roads so they become public roads, my understanding is that there's a condition before the town meeting can act, that the select board must first vote to accept the layout. And my understanding is that has not happened or has been voted, voted in the negative. So am I, did I state that correctly?
You did. We recommend it further study.
So I think that I'm going to allow you the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mello, but the, the impact of any vote on this would be advisory at, at best. It's not something that the, the select board can do or the town meeting can do where we are right now.
Sure, I understand that, but I would like to speak.
Yes, you have the floor.
Just to share with the taxpayers that are here, this development is only 12 house lots. Six homes on one side of the road, six on the other. The developer spent $550,000 to put this in. He did not leave the town with any problems. He actually even donated a large portion of land to the conservation commission. Subsequent to this, GAF Engineering provided all of the documentation to substantiate that the work was complete. The planning board, through Mr. George Barrett, had contracted a Mr. Charles Rowley, a respected civil engineer in town. He did the final inspection on the road, and everybody at that time, including municipal maintenance, the planning board, the town planner, treasurer's office, were all on board that this road was completed. And I will just read the last paragraph of Mr. Rowley's statement. "The street layout plan dated August 30th, 2018 by GAF Engineering is complete and in substantial compliance with street acceptance documentation. The layout plan, description, drainage easement descriptions accurately depict the premises to be considered for acceptance at town meeting. I recommend approve of the proposed layout of Candle Paper Lane to the Board of Selectmen. Very truly yours, Charles Rowley." And this was sent to the chairman of the planning board at that time, Mr. Alan Slaven. That's all I have to say. If the voters are going to be taking tonight, I don't know what kicking the can down the road will do for any of the people on Candle Paper Lane, which 50% of them are veterans, as lo, as well as myself. I represent those veterans. I represent the elderly. I'm one of the youngest people on the road at age 79. I think it's very disappointing that this has to be kicked down the road. The road is complete. Nobody owns a nickel. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, gentleman behind you.
Madam Moderator, before you continue, just a point of reference. I believe you referred to me as the chair of the planning board. I believe it should be the chair of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, my name is Carl Schultz, and I'm speaking now as vice chair of the Wareham Planning Board. This was a subdivision, and as such, Mr. Rowley's report was required as part of the subdivision plan to ensure that the road was properly constructed. One of the conditions of the subdivision was that an HOA be established. The HOA is responsible for road maintenance, plowing services, as well as maintenance of the drainage systems. So the fact that the road was properly constructed was a requirement of the subdivision plan. Every subdivision plan built in town requires an HOA. The owners who purchased these properties had a deed restriction and were aware of the requirement and their responsibilities under the HOA. I recommend that the town does not take on the additional responsibility for plowing these streets, maintaining the, maintaining and maintaining the drainage systems. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article twenty-eight?
Yes, ma'am, there is. The previous gentleman was reciting something that is very inaccurate. At the registry of deeds, Plymouth County, there are covenants for this development. We were required to build a certain size house, have a two-car garage, no boats in the yard, et cetera. There is no documents anywhere on this planet that says an association had to be completed. I requested under Freedom of Information Act to the Selectmen for all of the documents that you have. No one ever complied. No one can show me this whole issue with association. There isn't any. But sir, if you have it, I'll apologize to you in the newspaper.
Well, no, 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 we're not going to have this-
Thank you.
This give and take, this back and forth. So I would like to, at this point, recognize town council on the point that I raised earlier with regard to the process or legalities for accepting private ways.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the meeting, Rich Bowden, Town Council. The process for accepting a street is covered by general laws, chapter 82, sections 22 and 23. It sets out a multi-step process. Step one is a hearing held by the Board of Selectmen, referral to the planning board, a report to the planning board, to the Board of Selectmen, and then the Board of Selectmen decide what to do with the planning board recommendation. And if the Board of Selectmen votes to lay out the way, then town meeting is empowered to vote to accept the Selectmen's layout or not. If you look at the article in this case, the article is to see if the town will vote to accept the Selectmen's layout of Candle Paper Lane. So in this case, it went to the planning board, it went to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen saw some conditions it might like. It's my understanding that Mr. Mello or the petitioners were not willing to go along with those. The Board of Selectmen has not voted to lay out Candle Paper Way, and so there is nothing for town meeting to vote on since the article is to see if you will vote to accept the Selectmen's layout. It hasn't been laid out. The petitioner can ask the Selectmen again, but that's the state of things. Any vote that you take tonight is purely a resolution. Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Smith.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm a little perplexed because I have gone back through town meeting warrants, through town meeting reports. In most of the roads that have been accepted by the town, if you go back in history, it has been the town that did the layout, that hired the engineer, that did the plans and brought it to town meeting. These homeowners, I know where the development is. It is not private. It does not have a sign that says private. They have been given a runaround for the past two years. I'm disappointed that this has happened to them. It is a beautiful development. The homes are gorgeous. These people work very hard to keep their road maintained and neat. I would hope and I would ask my elected officials to go back to the drawing board and work with these people because every other street in the history of this town has made its way here without these kind of problems. And I would hope that you would work with these people. I'm disappointed, very disappointed, that this, they brought this here after, I think, probably two years, two or three years of working with this community, and we're here tonight unable to vote. So I am asking those of you that have to confer with this group, go back to the drawing board and bring this back in the spring and give them the same opportunity that every other street that has been accepted, every other street that is being plowed, be plowed. It's not a private development. Give these people the respect that they deserve.
Just for clarification-
Yes, you have, you have the floor briefly, Mr. Mello.
It'll be brief. This is for town council. You mentioned the layout. The layout was done by Mr. Carnish, the developer. He paid GAF Engineering $5,000 for that layout. It was hand-delivered to the planning board upon completion, so you do have the layout. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article twenty-eight regarding Candle Paper Lane? Seeing no one else standing, we will go to a, yes.
Question, these people have been living here all these years. They pay their real estate taxes. Who plows the streets?
Who plows the streets? Who cleans the storm drains? Are they doing that or is the town doing that? And is this just a way for the town to avoid the small cost of helping them out by plowing their streets when they pay taxpayers, their taxpayers here for all these years?
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 28? Seeing no one else standing, we'll go to a vote, having in mind that at best, if this passes, it's a resolution only. All those in favor of the motion under Article 28, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by stating no.
No.
Passes by a majority by voice vote. Article number 21, zoning bylaw, Article 14 clarification. Is there a motion on Article 21?
Madam Moderator, Michael Kangway, Wareham Planning Board. I move that the town approve as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article 21. May I have the report of the planning board?
The planning board held a public hearing on this article on October 16th, 2023. Rewrites Article 14 as a description of the administrative functions of the land use boards and clarifies enforcement. The planning board finds the article requires a two-thirds vote. The planning board recommends approval of Article 21 with a vote of 5-0-0.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 4-0-0.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this Article 6-0-0 as this amendment to Article 14 will clarify the administration of land use permits, including the work under a permit, the imposition of project review fees paid by the developer, security for completion of all permit requirements in the form of a preference guarantee, and explains the role of the zoning enforcement officer in enforcing the zoning bylaws, including imposition of penalties for violation.
Is there anything further to be stated, said on Article 21? Yes, Mr. Schultz.
Just a, a point of note, that the changes to Article 14 are part and parcel of the previously accepted, uh, changes to Article 15, which we voted on earlier. So they, they were restructured together, even though we, we take them independently. So, um, these are just clarifications of board processes and regulatory processes. There's no cost to the town.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 21? Seeing no one else standing, we will go to a vote on Article 21, which is a zoning bylaw change requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 21 to approve as printed in the warrant, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no. It passes by voice vote unanimously. Article 12 Affordable Housing Trust. Is there a motion on Article 12?
Article 12 Affordable Housing Trust. I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund the sum of $150,000 as a grant to the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust to be used by the trust to provide for the creation and preservation of affordable housing and the town aware him from the benefit of low income and moderate income households and to further require an affordable housing restriction.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article 12.
Fine. I'm sorry.
Oh, may I have the report and recommendation of the Select-
Select Board-
Did you want to say something else with regard to-
No.
Okay. May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 4-0-0.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable, favorable recommendation. The Affordable Housing Trust has not been funded since its initial outlay of $60,000 in 2006. Approval of this article will provide the trust with $150,000, allowing it to assist in low and moderate income households while promoting the development of affordable housing in town. It is an appropriate use of CPC funds, at least 10%, of which must be used for affordable housing. Finance voted 5-2-0.
Yes, Mrs. Slaven on Article 12.
Yes, I'm standing as a treasurer of the CPC. We voted 4-0-0 to bring this article forward. And as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust, I ask that my, the CPC's five minutes be given to Carl Schultz, who is the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. Thank you.
Yes, I recognize Mr. Schultz.
Uh, Gerard Caddolo.
Well, uh, 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 actually, I was recommend, uh, recognizing Mr. Schultz. You will get a chance after Mr. Schultz speaks.
Yes, uh, Carl Schultz, Chairman of the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, the state of Massachusetts, uh, created an act that allowed towns to adopt and create an affordable housing trust. Uh, Wareham, uh, voted, uh, to create the trust, um, back in 2010, I believe. Since that time, uh, the trust has been, um, not as active as we'd like to be. But I, I, uh, acknowledge that for the last year, we have worked to cement our processes, cement our charter, uh, and have processed four, well, two, we've processed two applications, um, which will, uh, deplete about 50% of our funds. And we have two more applications pending for the spring of next year, which would deplete the rest of our funds. So our mission of, um, assisting development of affordable housing, rental assistance to residents in town, uh, needs additional funds to continue to proceed. The purpose of the trust, uh, the majority of the funding for the trust will come from the CPC. Uh, and I remind you that 10% of CPC funds are set aside for affordable housing. The, the purpose of the state act was to give the towns the ability to act quickly between town meetings, uh, so that opportunities that arise, particularly rental assistance, uh, particularly, um, opportunities to assist local developers, uh, can be acted on between town meetings more quickly. Uh, this is a relatively modest sum, uh, that we, we'd like you to trust us to, um, continue to bring forward affordable housing opportunities in town. Thank you.
Thank you. And the gentleman behind, Mr. Schultz.
Gerard Caddolo. This $150,000, is that going to increase our taxes by $150,000? I'm serious. Tell me.
Well, if there's someone that can answer the, the question, I think the answer to that is that, that horse has left the barn.
May I?
Yeah, yes, Mrs.
As the treasurer of CPC, this is part of the community, uh, preservation, uh, funds that are part of your taxes. You pay 3% of anything over $100,000 and it goes into the fund. You had a handout coming in this morning, this afternoon, that there was $4.1 million available in our CPA funds. And this is just trying to accommodate our requirement to put some funds into affordable housing. No additional taxes will be paid. You already pay it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Did you have something further to say after your question, sir?
Yes. Uh, now I, I know that the money is, comes from another source, $150,000. How do we know that where this money goes?
To answer the question?
Yeah, where does it go? Where, is it going to build a, a four-unit building or is it, what is it going to do?
The, the answer is, uh, the trust has an application process. Uh, the members of the trust will review and, oh, I'm trying to, I'm sorry. The trust has an application process. Applicants fill out the application. They have to be qualified. Um, they have, wait, I'm trying to answer your question. So they have to qualify, they have to be qualified. Any, any property that gets constructed will have to be deed restricted, so, as an affordable unit. Any individual who gets rental assistance will have to meet the state affordability responsibility. Um, any funds dispersed by the trust, um, that were funded by CPC grants will be then, uh, reported back to the CPC. The, the process for the grant, the applicant will, will be presented to, to the CPC. The CPC should have two checkpoints. The trust, who are all members of the town, or residents of the town, I'm sorry, and then the CPC will then double-check that.
Does anybody in the floor-
Well, no, 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 no. See, here's the thing. We're not going to have this back and forth and back and forth. Uh, Mr. Schultz has, uh, spoken to answer your questions. You have a little bit more time left if you, uh, wish to be heard further.
I just, I'm, I'm questioning where money goes in this town. I really am questioning where money goes in this town. And I, and it's up to the Selectmen. I've said it before. We should be cutting real estate taxes on elderly people. You Selectmen should be working on that.
Thank you. The lady behind you.
Michelle Rose. Um, my question has to do with, uh, my background is affordable housing, okay? Um, I've been involved in development of maybe 50,000 units of affordable housing. So I have a little bit of experience. My question would be, okay, so you're saying, well, this is how they're going to apply. Do you have a budget of how that $150,000 is going to be spent? Is it going to be $75,000 for help with rentals? Is it going to be money for homeless people to move into housing? Is it going to be security deposits? Is, is it going to be something where people need help with moving from homelessness and a shelter into affordable housing? Do you have a budget? Or you're just sort of guessing and saying, okay, you have to be worthy of it?
Yes, to answer the question, Mr. Schultz.
Yes. To answer the question, uh, the trust prepares annually a sources and uses funds, a funds report. Um, so we, we anticipate how much money we're going to have and then we, um, um, project how we're going to use those funds. Right now, we have funds, we have projected the use of funds for, for, for the funds that we have. We've projected the use of funds, 50% of the funds that we have available to assist, uh, to development projects. And about 50% of the funds to help, uh, first month rental for 112, uh, individuals. Um, that's the funds.
Just first months, right.
First months. That's, that's all we've got. That's what we've, that's the motion we have. That uses all the funds.
Well, no, 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 no. Again, we're not going to have this back and forth between-
That's what our, that's what we prepared, was the sources and uses of funds. That's what this year's sources and uses of funds projected. If we get the $150,000, then we will, again, prepare a projection for how the funds are going to be used. If we don't have applications, I can't tell you in advance of how we're going to use the funds. It's, it's the-
Well, no, 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 no. See, here's the thing, all right? We're not doing this back and forth and back and forth. I believe that Mr. Schultz has finished his answer. If you have something further to say, Ms. Rose, please go ahead and say it.
Uh, just one more point. We are not going to spend any money if there's not a, a valid, it's, we're not going to just spend the money. So if we don't spend it, it gets returned to the CPC. That's about, that-
Well, no, I think you've answered the question. Thank, thank, thank you. Yes, you have a little bit more time if you wish to make another point.
Okay. I would think that if you're asking for $150,000 in funds, you know what your budget is going to be. Particularly since this agency has been, um, operating since 2010. You must have done, prepared budgets before. You must have had people applying all the time. Why can't you put together a budget?
So that's a rhetorical point.
If you're asking for $150,000-
If you're making that point, that's, that's fine.
If you're asking for $150,000, you have to know how you're going to spend it or else-
You have, you have 30 seconds.
Or else, you know, threw something up in the air and it came down $150,000. That's not a way to do things. I'm sorry. Okay.
Yes, the lady behind you.
Annie Hayes, 52, Farmer's Lane. Um, if I recall, we just voted $150,000 or thereabouts for Chapel Lane under the Community Preservation. Is that not correct? Yes? And I'm still reeling from the fact that each unit is $3,100, which is over $36,000 a year, considered affordable housing.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
Yes, Mr. Russell, Precinct 6. Affordable housing, this, the Community Preservation Act has accumulated so much money in its affordable housing element because of the fact that there have not been enough advocacy or, uh, affirmative approaches toward eliminating or providing affordable housing. That's, this pittance of $150,000 to allow these people to hopefully expedite and stop resolving some of the, the lack of affordable housing in this area and this, and in this community. You know, that is, it's a pittance. That's, but the, the money, she just stated the fact that we have a lot of money in that affordable housing aspect that can't be used for anything else. It's designated for affordable housing under this Community Preservation Act. You have the land trust, you have the affordable, affordable housing. So that has to be used. And if these people are going to be working toward expediting the, eliminating the lack of affordable housing, then we need to give them more money if not, you know? And, and that aspect of, that small project, those six units that we just was able to approve and, and help subsidize, that is a pittance out of that 4. something million dollars, you know? So let's start to be more affirmative toward, you know, resolving our housing situation rather than them be picking on. I'm sure there's availability on these-
30 seconds, 30 seconds.
I'm sure there's availability on these commu- committees to express those intricacies or concerns. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Jamie Repan-Buckminster, Precinct 1. Um, I just want to thank the folks who were involved in getting this on the agenda because it is a necessary thing for us to do. Um, the way this works is if you have a playground you want to build, you show up to the Community Preservation Committee and you ask them to help you build a playground. This is how it works with affordable housing. This is one mechanism to get those projects done. The money is already in our coffers because we pay 3% of our property taxes in excess of $100,000 of your value to that fund. That was voted before I got here a long time ago. Um, but I appreciate what it does and this is a way to get the money spent. Um, so thank you to everybody who worked on this. It's, there's an application process. If you want to know more about it, I'm sure you'd be happy to show up to a committee meeting and I'm sure those committees need volunteers because they always seem to. Um, this is really not the venue to learn about how this works. So I'd, I'd, um, urge you to support this article. And just as an aside, we can't do anything about the definition of affordable housing. It is what it is unless you'd like to rally your, you know, senators and representatives. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Julie Smith, Finance Committee. You know, I looked at this article. You know, I'm not opposed to helping folks in emergency situations, first year rent, first, excuse me, security deposit, first month's rent. My concern is when you give to a project a large sum of money, I want this body to vote for it. Uh, you know, whether it be 25,000, 50,000, there's, there's earmarks that the town has to put things out for bid and all that. I want more than one committee or one department head moving an article forward with a lot of money. I want town meeting to vote on it, have the final say. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 12 Affordable Housing Trust? Seeing no one else standing, we'll go to, oop. Yes.
I'm going to sit. If you'll excuse me, I've been a little bit dizzy. That's not going to impact what I say. I am a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. I have been involved with town government now for probably two and a half years. I've never seen a town in where I've lived previously where the citizens come and make things happen. And when you- And when you talk about the Affordable Housing Trust, there have been volunteers who've spent a number of days, months, and years making sure that we had a process that we could work with, especially when we do not have the funds to fund actual employees to do that. We know we can help people. We also know when we go to help people, if we have to come back to the town meeting every time we get a request from someone for help, that we can't grant if we don't have funds that are readily available, do we say to that person, well, come back to us in three months because in five months we're going to have a town meeting again, and then we'll ask if we can spend the money for you? Please, please, have some belief in the committee that runs this. They are all very, very knowledgeable and committed people, and the main goal-
Thirty seconds.
The main goal is to help citizens when they need it for affordable housing. Please vote for this.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Twelve? Seeing no one else, oh, I wasn't sure if you were headed to the microphone.
I just have comments about the past-
Make your comments brief. I think technically, if I'm remembering correctly, I think you've already used your two minutes, but go ahead.
Building a playground is a concrete item. You know how much it's going to cost. You know how much the equipment's going to cost. You know how much the digging is going to cost. Affordable housing is not a concrete. It's an idea, and it can lead to something concrete. But what they're talking about as affordable housing, it's not concrete. They don't have a budget. They don't know how they're going to spend it. And as far as people working really hard, there's a lot of people working very hard, volunteering for the town of Wareham, and I applaud them. I think they're wonderful. But that doesn't mean you should vote for them for what they want because they do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Twelve? Seeing no one else standing, we'll go to a vote. On Article Twelve requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Twelve, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no.
No.
It passes by a majority voice vote. The next article is Article Eight, Amendment to Waterway Rules. Is there a motion on Article Eight?
Madam Moderator, I vote that the town approve Article Eight as written in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second on Article Eight. May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
The Select Board recommended favorable action four zero zero.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted favorable action six zero zero. Finance Committee recommended this article amends previously adopted waterways rules. The Attorney General approved the waterway rules, but requires the changes and clarifications as shown above, or shown in this article.
Thank you. Recognize Mr. Buckminster.
Good evening, Gary Buckminster, Director of Natural Resources. Just to reiterate what Mr. Camarano said, this was just cleaning up what was passed last year at town meeting. One portion we did review, which was a little bit of a sticking point for boats being left on the beaches on some of the public properties. We were able to change some wording into that to allow a little more activity with kayaks and working with some other people. There were six sections in total that were recommended by the Attorney General, and all were modified to their recommendation. And we will resubmit these changes to them, and I think we should be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Eight? Seeing no one else standing, we'll go to a vote on Article Eight, which is a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Eight, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no. It passes unanimously by a voice vote. The next article is Article Twenty, Update Zoning Bylaws, Article Three. Is there a motion on Article Twenty? Yes, Mr. King.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town approve as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made in second on Article Twenty. May I have the report of the Planning Board?
The Planning Board held a public hearing on this article on October sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Inserts additional solar energy uses into the use table and changes some of the definitions for greater clarity and specificity. The Planning Board finds the article requires a two-thirds vote, and the Planning Board recommends approval of Article Twenty with a vote of five zero zero.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommended favorable action four zero zero.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this Articles six zero zero. This amendment to Article Three corrects clerical errors, will provide additional clarity as to permitted uses allowed in various districts, zoning districts in the town, removes some ambiguity as to the types of permits required to undertake land development certain uses, including large ground-mounted solar projects.
Yes, gentlemen, at the microphone.
Gerard Cardillo. I'd like to know who Mr. King represents.
Who Mr. King represents? Mr. King, Mr. King is the chairman of the Planning Board.
Okay. I didn't know who you were. Thank you. Who's paying for the solar panels and what's going on with the solar stuff?
If there's anyone that cares to answer the question-
Why shouldn't you care to answer the question?
What?
I'll answer the question.
All right, answer the question, please, yes.
To speak to the question, Carl Schultz, Vice Chair of the Planning Board. Applicants for solar, large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays submit an application to the town, pay filing fees, and then go through the permitting process. Building of those projects is the responsibility of the developer. All costs and fees for building is the developer's responsibility. And they pay taxes.
Yes, sir. You still have the floor.
I'm solely opposed to solar power. So global warming is nothing but a fabricated thing, created by the-
Well, no, 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 no. So be, allow the gentleman to speak. I'm going to give him that latitude. I'm not sure climate change is in this article, but go ahead, sir.
Solar is in this article.
Go ahead.
Well, the solar, global warming is caused by the sun. The global warming is on every planet in the solar system. On every planet in the solar system, they have no fossil fuels. The sun is expanding in size every year. In a million years, this planet will be uninhabitable. So these people that are laughing in the background, they don't know what the hell they're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Schultz.
Carl Schultz, speaking for the Planning Board. This particular article, to be clear, does not increase or change solar permitting in town, which is already permitted and required under state and federal law. This article, the change to this article is specifically in response to objections raised by lawyers for the applicants regarding the kind of permits they're required. So we're merely clarifying the kind of permits that large-scale ground-mounted solar projects require. They need a site plan review, and they need a special permit, both. Several of the lawyers have contended that they don't need both, but that has been our historical position, and we're merely clarifying that in the way the bylaw is written.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Twenty? Seeing no one else standing, we'll go to a vote on Article Twenty. Another zoning bylaw change requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Twenty, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. The next article is Article Thirteen, Delete Lottery Requirements for Town Meeting Articles. Is there a motion on Article Thirteen?
I move that the town approve Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant.
Is there a motion made in seconded on Article Thirteen? May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action on Article Thirteen of four zero zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action six zero zero.
Yes, Mrs. Slaven, you have the floor.
Yes, I rise to defeat this article. When we first went to a lottery requirement, it was trying to have people come into town meeting and be here for the whole meeting and not stack the population to get a particular article passed because all you needed was a simple majority. The reason to go into the lottery is that it wasn't, you didn't know when your article was coming up, so you stayed and listened to the whole business of the town. My concern is that if we take these articles numerically, by the time we get to the end of the evening and we come to the later articles, we may not have a majority of across-the-board body here. We could very well stack the remaining people to vote a majority for the late articles. I do recommend that we keep the lottery so it's a surprise whenever an article comes before, so we don't have people coming just for one article and then going home. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article Thirteen? And I would make one point. We actually have a zero quorum, so, which we certainly have more than zero people here this evening. Is there anything further to be said on Article Thirteen? Yes, Mr. Russell.
Yes, Mr. Russell, Precinct Six. And I think that it was an effect earlier on in our town meetings years ago where there was a tendency of having a large presence of employees and town administrative people present during the course of the deliberation. And with the lottery system, it maintains the body, the democratic process to continue. I think the lottery system should probably stay in place.
Is there anything further to be said on Article Thirteen? Seeing no one else standing, we'll go to a vote. On Article Thirteen requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Thirteen, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the motion under Article Thirteen, please signify by stating no.
No.
The chair is in doubt. I will call for a hand count. All those in favor of the motion under Article Thirteen, please signify by raising your Section one.
One.
Section two.
Seven.
Seven. Section three.
Nine.
Nine. Section four.
Eighteen.
Eighteen one eight. All those opposed to the motion under Article Number Thirteen, please signify by raising your cards.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, four-five. Section two.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, three-four. Section three.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Section four.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, two-nine. The yes is forty-six, and the no is a hundred and thirty. The next article is Article Number Nineteen, Men's Zoning Bylaws, Article Sixteen. Is there a motion on Article Nineteen? Yes, Mr. King.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town approve as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made in seconded on Article Nineteen. May I have the report of the Planning Board?
The Planning Board held a public hearing on this article on April eleven, twenty twenty-two. The article includes clarifying and new definitions requested by the Planning Board and the Building Commissioner. There are other articles that include definitions in them. Planning Board approves this article with a vote of five zero zero.
May I just ask, just quickly, April twenty twenty-two or April twenty twenty-three?
Supposed to read April twenty twenty-three. That was a scriptur error.
That's fine. May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this Articles six zero zero. Article Sixteen of the zoning bylaws provides a list of defined terms commonly appearing throughout the zoning bylaws. This amendment to Article Sixteen will provide additional clarity by including additional defined terms, again, common terms found through various articles of the zoning bylaws. This will help better assist applicants seeking relief or permits for land development and the applicant boards and/or town officials involved in the process.
Is there anything further to be said on Article Nineteen? Seeing no one standing, we'll go to a vote on Article Nineteen, a zoning bylaw, so it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Nineteen, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no. It passes by a voice vote unanimously. Next article is Article Number Five. Is there a motion on Article Five?
I move that the town approve and fund the collective bargaining agreements between the town and A. Wareham Police Sergeants Union, NE PBA, Local one eighty-one; B. Wareham Communication Officers Union, NE PBA; C. Wareham Superior Officers Union, NE PBA, Local one eighty.
Second.
Motion made in seconded on Article Five. May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action as to all three, six zero zero.
And the report and recommendation of the Select Board also favorable?
Select Board recommends favorable action on Article Five, four zero one.
Is there anything further to be said on Article Five? Seeing no one else, seeing no one standing, we'll go to a vote on Article Five. All those in favor of the motion under Article Five, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no. It passes unanimously by a voice vote. It passes unanimously by a voice vote. The next article is Article number eleven, the Westgate property.
Rise to a point of information? Personal privilege?
Yes, what is your point, Mr. Russell?
How many articles do we have remaining?
We have four articles, four articles remaining. I have an eye, I have an eye on that. We may be done by ten. Article number, I'm sorry, Article number eleven, is there motion under Article number eleven?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund the sum of twenty-six thousand dollars for a grant to the town of Wareham to be expended by its Conservation Department to improve the trail system and construct an observation sitting deck at the Douglas S. Westgate Conservation and Riverwalk property in the town of Wareham.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article eleven. May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action four zero zero.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action seven zero zero.
Yes, and Mrs. Slavin?
Yes, Community Preservation voted four zero zero to bring this forward. I don't see our conservation agent here, so I will speak to the article. I am Chair of the Conservation Commission. This is a, this has been approved by Conservation. It is the construction of an observation deck on a site on the Wee Wee Antique River that had been part of the pump station taking care of the cranberry bogs that are part of the Westgate property. It is a delightful site. Twenty-six thousand is not a lot of money to put into such a, what should I say, peaceful place. Part of it is to improve a walkway from the bogs down into the site here for an easy trance, easy walking. So there's a steep hill going down. This other trail will allow an easier access for people who don't want to walk that steeper trail, but I strongly recommend twenty-six thousand is not a lot of money in order to put a delightful place available on the Westgate property. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article eleven? Seeing no one else standing, will go to vote on Article eleven, which requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article eleven, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no. It passes unanimously by a voice vote. The next article is Article twenty-six, Construction Costs For WPCF Projects Clarifier, Et Cetera. Is there motion on Article twenty-six?
Yes, Madam Moderator. I'm Bernie Pigeon, Chairman of the Board of Sewer Commissioners. I move the town appropriate thirty-six million for the purpose of financing the construction of the WPCF clarifier upgrade and headworks projects, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in Section one of Chapter twenty-nine C. of the General Laws. That to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow thirty-six million and issue bonds or notes, therefore, under Chapter forty-four of the General Laws and/or Chapter twenty-nine C. of the General Laws, that such bonds or notes shall be the general obligation of the town unless Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board determines that they should be issued as limited allocations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section one of Chapter twenty-nine C. That the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Chapter twenty-nine C. See, and in the connection therewith, to enter into a financing agreement and/or a security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, that the Select Board or their designee is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary for convenient to carry out the project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article number twenty-six. May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action on number twenty-six of four zero one.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action five one zero.
Mr. Pigeon, you have the floor?
Thank you very much. This evening, we have some very critical issues that we reviewed before and this project is very critical to the plant itself and very much in need for the community as a whole. This evening, to explain some of the criticality, we have our GHD consultants represented by Mark Dranklevy and Sarah Greenberg.
Yes, so are you requesting that they have the courtesy of the floor, Mr. Pigeon?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
And how much time will they?
I believe they've got it down to thirteen minutes.
All right, I'm going to go with the thirteen minutes because I think it's a complicated issue. Be helpful to have the information for the voters, but thirteen minutes and that's it?
Can I get an extra minute for reading all that?
The engineers have the floor, and please identify yourself for the record.
Sarah Greenberg from GHD, thank you. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yes. That should be coming up. He's working on it.
Thank you. Next, as was just presented, this is for Article twenty-six, for the clarifier and headworks upgrade for appropriating the construction funds, next. Next, please.
He's trying.
Thank you.
She'll give you an extra thirty seconds, Sarah.
Thank you.
Right now, it seems to be having technical difficulties, but...
Previous by two, please. One more previous? Thank you. You can see up here on your screen, this is showing you the Wareham Water Pollution Control Facility from areas one to six. This is how the wastewater that comes in from the collection system, from residences and commercial areas that are connected to the plant, and this is how it's treated, the wastewater. So it can be safely released back into the environment. Area one is the headworks facility. That's where we have our screens that pull out the large objects, such as rags, any other large objects that may come in, as well as this is where any grit or sandy material that comes in from the collection system is removed at this stage. This is also where septic receiving is located. As septic haulers pump septic tanks from around the town or surrounding areas, they can come here to the facility and for a fee discharge, so it can be treated here. Then the wastewater moves on to area two, aeration basins. That's where the bugs and the microbes in the wastewater treat the wastewater so that when it moves to area three, our circular secondary clarifiers, all those microbes and bugs that have been treating the wastewater can settle or fall to the bottom, leaving clarified liquid on top to continue to the rest of the treatment process, which at this facility is area four, our denitrification filters. Those are tanks that have sand in them that the clarified water passes through. This is where the rest of our nitrogen is removed so that the facility can get down to its permit levels. And then it goes to area five, our ultraviolet disinfection, where the wastewater that's been treated and the nitrogen brought down to appropriate levels is now disinfected so it can safely be released back into the environment, which is the outfall at the Agawam River. Next. Most of the existing facility is at or beyond its useful life expectancy of twenty years, and out of the treatment train that we just showed you, this article concerns areas one and three, next. Area, area one is the headworks. This is the first process that the treatment facility sees, that the wastewater sees when it comes to the facility. It's the most heavily abused. It's removing our wipes, our large objects, our sand, our grit, and since the wastewater is highly corrosive, it creates that kind of an air environment between the equipment being at its life expectancy and corroding, it's all starting to fail, and it's no longer doing the job as it should. Next. This is also where the septic receiving comes in. Again, septic haulers from this, that can pump septic tanks from the town or surrounding areas can for a fee offload those here. This is something that the facility relies on for revenue, for budget and maintenance, and next, as you can see, since it's been unfortunately shut down for the last six months plus, it's a loss of revenue to the facility of about six hundred thousand dollars per year. Next. Since the headworks equipment is not functioning as it should and failing, those rags and wipes that were to be removed, all that sand and grit that was to be removed is now continuing on to the rest of the processes at the plant that are sensitive and aren't intended to be dealing with this stuff. You can see on the left, somebody is removing a tank, is removing grit and sand and wipes out of a tank. This is maintenance activity that shouldn't have to be occurring as frequently, and you can see an inset photo next to that person of what a clean tank would look like to give you an idea. On the right, you see rags that are over the wall that have clogged up those white tubes. Again, that is maintenance activity, next, that shouldn't be occurring or occurring as much, so that is adding unnecessary cost to the rest of the facility. Next. The second component of this article is the clarifier upgrade. The clarifiers are critical to meeting permit. The current ones do not meet current design standards as they are too shallow. So as I mentioned, the wastewater that's treated by the microbes, as they treat and settle to the bottom in these tanks, the current tanks are not deep enough to allow for them to properly do their job. In addition, most of the equipment is forty years old or double its life expectancy, and so the clarifier equipment is starting to fail. Next. You can see on the left-hand side what a working clarifier would look like. As I mentioned, as the microbes settle, leaving clarified liquid up top to continue on to the rest of the process. On the right-hand side shows an example earlier in the year when some equipment broke at the Wareham Water Pollution Control Facility, and you can see stuff on top that wasn't settled to the bottom that would continue on to the next stage of treatment, which as we mentioned, were sand filters, and that can cause the next stages of treatment to not work entirely and could cause a risk to meeting permit. Next. Thus, as I mentioned, this is critical for meeting permit. Next. And when, what happens when a facility doesn't meet permit consistently? Then this, the federal or state agencies can get involved and enter into a consent order. Next. You can see here, the city of Quincy, next, had to pay remedial measures and excess of a hundred million. Next. You can see that the state of Massachusetts sued Plymouth over sewage break in twenty sixteen when a line failed and was seeking damages up to fifty thousand for each day of violation. Next. And that could, depending on how long that goes on, that could add up. Next. And the city of Gloucester, more recently, is having to do an upgrade project because again, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency entered into a consent decree with the city, and this project, in order to upgrade their facility, to be able to handle the failings and what is going wrong, is estimated to cost next between a hundred million and a hundred and fifty million. Next. The need for this work was identified as back in twenty fifteen through a capital improvement plan. More recently, in a twenty twenty-one plant evaluation, it looked at all the equipment at the facility, its age, its condition, how likely was it to fail, and that analysis created a list of priority projects and of which this headworks and clarifier upgrade projects, they rose to the top. So while this is not new work, this, as the years have passed, it's become more urgent. And in addition, you can see that due to inflation costs over the past few years, how quickly those costs have changed. Next. This article is concerning replacement of equipment that has exceeded its life expectancy, but it will reuse existing buildings and tanks as much as possible, and this repair and upgrade does consider the future. It is being designed in tandem with ongoing wastewater planning efforts. Thus, these are necessary repairs that will create a foundation for future expansion at the facility. Next. The amount of this article is a cost up to thirty-six million dollars, which the town is seeking to be funded through a state loan program, which is a low-interest loan program, and includes ten percent principal forgiveness, which is like grant money. So you can see the cost of the project under the state loan program of thirty-three million compared to on the open market if it had to pursue through other funding mechanisms of forty-six million. So we're talking about over ten million dollars less through the state program. Next. And critically, after October, the state will give the funding to other communities if the borrowing is not authorized this October. Next. And so the breakdown of the, of this article in terms of through this loan program is, as I mentioned, ten percent principal forgiveness, which is like grant money. It's three point six million. Of the remainder, seventy-two percent in contributions by born through an intermunicipal agreement, and the remaining funded by the Wareham sewer users. The town has estimated forty-six dollars per EDU per year for Wareham sewer users. Next. And the other option are the consequences of no action. If the facility does not have the headworks and the equipment and the clarifier equipment upgraded and it continues to fail, the permit could be not met and not met consistently, which could trigger involvement from the federal and state government to issue a consent order to force the facility to meet permit, and of course, toilets still need to be flushed, showers still need to be taken. So if equipment is failing, there will be need for paying for a temporary fix, which could be quite expensive whilst the permanent solution is being completed. And of course, if there is a consent order and the federal and state government gets involved, fines up to twenty-five thousand dollars per day, which equals ten million per year, is a possibility of that action. Next. To break it down, and the Article twenty-six, again, thirty-three million dollars to the Wareham sewer users. If this project is not pursued under state funding with, that has this principal forgiveness and low-interest loan on the open market, we see that it could be up to the forty-six million. And furthermore, the no action could trigger also fines if the consent order through the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency comes into play, of up to ten million for those fines and up to as much as ten million for temporary solutions while the full project, the permanent solution is going. So you can see no action can be sixty-six, up to sixty-six million dollars or more. Next. And how does that break down per EDU? Again, Article twenty-six, forty-six dollars per EDU per year. On, if the, if this is not pursued through a state funding that has the principal forgiveness and the low interest, that is up to thirty, one hundred and thirty-three dollars per EDU per year if it's through just an open market loan to complete the project, and the no action items can break down into up to two hundred and eighteen dollars per EDU per year if there is temporary fixes needed. In addition, the fines that could be imposed through a consent order are to the town as a whole, and that is up to four hundred and fifty dollars per resident. Next. The upgrades and repairs of this project are necessary and have to be completed, so the only decision is when. the only decision is when and how much will it cost. Next. And that is all.
Thank you. That's a lot of information in that amount of time. Is there anything further to be said on Article 26? Yes, gentleman at the microphone.
Gerard Cardillo. I'd just like to ask the young lady, who's paying you for your services right now?
If you're willing to answer the question, I believe the answer is that the...
Is she employed by the town right now?
I believe through the town, but go ahead if you can answer.
Last fall, yeah, last fall, the design of this project was approved through a town meeting. And that project is currently under design, which we are designing and involved with.
What company are you with?
As I mentioned in the beginning, Sarah Greenberg, GHD.
Thank you.
You've done more of these projects than you have...
Well, no. See, here's how this works, okay? So if you have a question, you have to ask it through me. If you do this back-and-forth thing that you've been doing, it just becomes very difficult for people to follow and somewhat disrespectful to the rest of the body. Do you have another question, sir?
Yes, I do. I'd like to...
You have to step up to the microphone also. I can't hear you.
I'd like to know their financial gains from this project. And is the town putting this whole thing up for bid?
So if you're willing and able to answer the question, Mr. Pidgen?
Yes, this project was put up for bid. It was granted at $2 million. We're about a third of the way through it at this point in time. And you asked earlier about their reputation in the world through a world-class company.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 26? You have to turn your microphone on.
I apologize for not standing up. I'm on a couple of medications that unfortunately make me dizzy. And I think my doctors enjoy that when they give me more. And also, before I start, I'd like to thank the body for going ahead on the lottery. For those of you don't remember, I originally wrote the article.
Well, no, you're out of order. So why don't you speak to Article 26 rather than one that we've already done?
Bottom line is, no garage today. Okay. Good evening and thank you for taking your time to attend this Fall Town Meeting. The sewer article in the Water Pollution Control Facility has and is a frustrating situation. We, all of us, looked at the possibility of additional outflow by the canal and ignored the duration of our water pollution control facility. There was no complete plan to update or to replace the existing facility as it aged out. Unfortunately, the saying "Pay me now or pay me later" has come home to roost. If either of the two repair or replacement items are not done and either fails, the plant shuts down. The state and the feds most likely will take over, and the cost to resolve the issues will be borne by all of us, not by the sewer users. There is no choice but to go ahead and approve these two items. What I ask is that you should demand that when this town meeting is over, put a complete plan together, place to repair or replace...
30 seconds, Mr. Slaven.
Thank you. Or to have additional in-ground discharge facilities done. I ask you to vote yes on this article, as we have been left with no viable alternative today. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, lady at the microphone?
Donna Fox Rubin. Why we got to this point is moot. We've beaten to death that we let too much time pass before we acted responsibly on what we needed to do. We knew the equipment was running out of life. Now, at the last meeting, I think we really beat the horse to death. We really thoroughly talked about everything. Personally, at the last meeting, I voted against it because I thought it was a Band-Aid. And I was looking for a more global holistic solution. I think the reality of the matter is, we've determined that if we have any pollution liability insurance, it's minimal at best and will cover virtually nothing if we pollute the land around us. I think we've reached the point where we are at critical mass, and I really think brass tacks. We're out of time. We have to do this now.
Thank you. We have sort of a knot of people there, but I'll recognize Mr. Titlebon.
Yes, thank you. Peter Titlebon, Precinct 3. In the spring, I spoke against and voted against this very same article. At that point in time, I didn't think that the Sewer Commission was in a position to tell us not just what this cost would be for this particular fix, but that they needed to take the capital improvement plan, which had last been done in 2015, when actually the selectmen, right after the selectmen ceded control to the Sewer Commission, it hadn't been updated. And I think we all know there's going to be a lot more money than just $36 million that's going to be required over the next 20 years. I don't want anybody thinking that this is going to take care of it and you're just going to pay $46 more on your EDU 10 years from now. Look at it to be two or three times that. That's just a fact of life. There's other things in that plant that are going to age out. They're going to have to be fixed. If we want to develop anymore in the town, we're going to have to figure out a way to add capacity. This all adds up to some maybe $200, $300 million over the next 20 years. And that's no joke. And I wanted the sewer commissioners to really push to get cracking on an updated capital improvement plan. I've spoken to the Water Pollution Control Facility Director about it and the chairman of the Sewer Commission. They're telling me that this capital improvement plan should be done by the end of the year. So I think that we've, you know, we've made our point in the spring. Get prepared to tell us what the hell this is all going to cost. I think they've done a legitimate job. I think they've done their best effort to do that. And so I would ask the body this time around to support this. We got to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lady behind you.
Annie Hayes, 52 Farmers Lane. In order to calculate or estimate the cost per household, I and those around me would have to know what an EDU is.
So to answer the question, Mr. Pidgen?
An equivalent dwelling unit.
Yes, thank you. Lady at the microphone?
Linda Hannan. A lot of numbers flying around. That was a great presentation, a lot of information. I just want to make sure that I'm clarifying and I understand what you guys said for numbers. So you're saying that if you are a sewer user, it's basically $46 a year per dwelling. And I know there's like a bunch of definitions, but that's basically what it is. If you are, if we vote for this today, if you are not a sewer user, there's no cost.
Correct.
If we don't do this today and we wait and it goes to the other extreme of the $46 million, sewer users will pay $230 a year. So it's the same thing, we'll be paying a lot more money. And if we get to the point it's not done, the government steps in, we get hit with fines, those fines hit the town, not just the sewer users. So both septic and sewer users will end up paying significant money.
Correct.
Do I have that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Russell?
Yes, from the layman's position, you know, or just a user of this treatment plant, I think we need to pass this immediately. You know, it's like not having a gun to your heads, but this is a critical point. Let's get rid of this quickly.
Thank you. Gentleman behind you?
Jeff Burrows. Quick question. Does this current upgrade meet the requirements of the new nitrogen requirements that are coming through in the very near future? Second part of the question would be, I'm in a non-sewer area. Does the town, does this upgrade increase the capacity to sewer the whole town? So that's another area with this title, with the nitrogen requirements that are coming up in the very near future. The rest of the town is going to have to take care of that. And these current upgrades do not address that issue. Is that correct?
So if anyone can answer the question, the first one's a little difficult because it hasn't actually gone into effect. But if someone can answer the question, go ahead.
I'd just like to speak to, this current upgrade is to repair and upgrade existing processes at the facility and will not add to expansion. However, it does, it is being designed and built to create a foundation so that expansion can occur at the facility, which would not be otherwise. However, to answer your question, it does not increase capacity currently through this.
Mr. Smith, and then, I'm not sure who was standing first. Go ahead. And then you, Mr. Smith, after them.
I just want to help clarify who and how many people in this town it will impact. Is, right now, there are 6,000 homes that are on sewer. If we just mildly assume there are two people in each one of those homes, which we know there might be some with one and a lot, some with a lot more, we basically are looking then at impacting 12,000 citizens. We are a town of somewhere between 24 and 27,000 citizens, depending on who you ask. Saying no to this will basically mean there'll be 6,000 of us who need to have a ditch in their backyard and a neighbor who will allow them to shower and brush their teeth there every day. So please vote for this. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Jody Smith, Finance Committee. I've been on that finance committee about five and a half years. And one of my first tasks was touring the water treatment plant. And at that time, after we were done, the chairman of the finance committee then asked, what did I think? And my answer was, this needs about $100 million now. That was five and a half years ago, and I don't know what that number would be today. That's one of our greatest natural resources here in Wareham is the ocean. We can't afford to have an accident, a problem, an issue. A lot of people count on for recreation, making a living, whatever. There's a lot of boards in town and a lot of individuals working on protecting our natural resources. So we need to take a good look at this and move on from there. This is the start of the project. This isn't going to increase the capacity because the outflow is a big concern. That has to be figured out, and I don't know where that's going to go. You know, and it's easy for me to stand up here and say, oh, it's $46. I don't have a dog in the fight. I have a septic system. But rest assured, our fight's coming. Anybody that reads what's going on in the local towns, our fight's coming. So I strongly recommend passing this. It needs it, and it needs it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, next to Mr. Pidgen there.
Mike Clements, Precinct 5. Question with regards to if the upgrade goes through, everything's... Hello. Will the discharge at that point still meet upcoming TMDL standards?
If someone is able to answer the question, yes, ma'am.
The design of this project, after we go forward, would be able to accommodate, depending on what the, this has to be determined through the comprehensive planning that is ongoing. But they, these upgrades are being designed with the future in mind, yes.
Thank you. Still have the floor, sir, if you wanted to say something further.
So the TMDL is still, not set in stone, but you believe the future treatment status repairs will meet that requirement?
Yes, to answer the question?
Mark Drainville with GHD. So in order to meet the TMDL, nitrogen, additional nitrogen will have to be removed from the Wareham River watershed. That's going to involve additional items. This is really, the most we can say is this is a foundation for that work in the future.
So you're not contributing? So you're not, after the upgrades are done, the contribution that the discharge will have will be either at the same level it is currently, or will it be slightly...
If you wish to answer the question, go ahead.
It will be, it will be, it will be the same, I guess I would say. It's, the work, there's additional work that's going to be needed for the TMDL compliance.
Am I still up time?
Yes.
So any future increases will affect that discharge?
If you wish to answer the question...
I'm sorry, could you ask that again?
So we are doing this with a future in mind. So I assume we're going to be adding additional discharges to the system. Where basically we're going to be increasing, you know, just the areas of town will be adding additional flows. So you'll be, that will still be, you will still be able to account for that, those discharges, that TMDL will still remain the same that you are actually, the nitrogen you'll be putting into the river will still be the same.
Yes, that is correct. The nitrogen going to the river will remain the same. That's correct.
Is there anything further you wish to say? You have 30 seconds.
Perfect. So, so the future, some of the future discharges can be treated with the system. At what point do you know how much additional discharge you can put into the system before you violate that?
Time. So if you wish to answer the question, go ahead. But gentlemen, that was just speaking. You're out of time at this point.
So we are looking at additional options for disposal of treated wastewater besides the river.
Is anything further to be said on Article 26? Mr. Slaven? So Mr. Slaven, I think you actually may be out of time at this point.
I'd just like to answer...
What's that?
I'd like to be able to answer the body here, since I have a lot of time into this project.
Okay, go ahead.
What he's asking for is the TMDLs. Sometime between November and December, the state and the feds have scheduled a meeting with us to discuss it. Just so everybody understands, everything that comes north of us flows through Wareham, but we're responsible for it going into Buzzers Bay, et cetera. The east and the west sides of Buzzers Bay are going to be under very strict regulations. It's going to require, at least what we've heard so far, is every home in Wareham will either have to have a maximum nitrogen-reducing septic system or be on sewer. Our plant, the project we have right now, will not be able to handle most likely the changes coming. And we will not know what it is until November, December, and then we can sit and fight with the feds and the state. So far, nobody's been very successful with that. So just understand that when I made my comments before, this being a Band-Aid is because what we're going to be hit with, whether we like it or not. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chadwick?
As we're getting closer to witching our arm glass, then we move this question for a vote.
Second. It's been a motion made and seconded to move the question in which we would go to vote. This is not a debatable motion. All those in favor of moving the... Any opposed? Signify by saying no.
No.
It passes by a majority voice vote. So we're going to go to a vote on Article 26. This is a borrowing article, so it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 26, as has been read previously and appears on the PowerPoint, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please signify by stating no.
No.
It passes by a two-thirds voice, two-thirds voice vote majority.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Russell. For what reason do you rise?
I rise for personal privilege. I'd like to make a motion to continue the town meeting to the completion of the remaining articles this evening.
Second. Is there a motion made and seconded to continue past the hour of 10 o'clock to the completion of the, there's just two articles left of the remaining articles on this warrant. All in favor, please state, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by stating no. It passes by a majority voice vote. Next article is Article 15, Elected Constables. Do we have a motion on Article 15?
I move that the town approve. It's printed in the warrant.
Second.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 400.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action 600.
Is there anything further to be said? Is there anything further to be said on Article 15? Seeing no one standing, we'll proceed to a vote on Article 15. All those in favor of the motion under Article 15, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no. It passes unanimously on a voice vote. Article 16, Road Commissioners. Do I have a motion on Article 16?
I move, I move that the town approve as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article 16. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action 400.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action 600.
Is anything further to be said on Article 16? Yes, Mr. Smith.
Madam Moderator, I speak for the article.
Oh, yes, yes, Mr. Slaven, go ahead.
Thank you.
You have to pull the mic towards you. I don't know about anyone else. I'm having a little difficulty hearing you.
I know. You have a problem finding us in this corner. I'll try and do this as quickly as possible, however, for you. The reason this article came up was, there was a request by three members of the town that are employees that have to be on this particular committee. And basically, they came and, not directly, but said they really liked not to be involved directly during daytime, et cetera, which affects their actual work during the day itself. The Select Board originally were the Road Commissioners. Back in 2010, we wrote some articles changing the charter, et cetera, and we took the Road Commissioners away from the selectmen at that time. And basically, the reason for this right now is that we have a shortage, obviously, of help, et cetera. Hours are critical during the daytime for our employees, and the interruptions do cause them trouble during the workday. So the Select Board has the ability to reach out through the town administrator with any Road Commissioner-type questions that come before them and get an answer within a week or less. The other big advantage is the selectmen during their meetings has town council there. A lot of times, there are legal issues involved with these particular items, and we can get an answer immediately. Where the Road Commissioners, we have to reach out to town council. It might take them two or three weeks to get it done. It's not as if the selectmen are sitting there trying to take back and gain power. It's strictly a matter of being more efficient with the town employees and also the system. Majority of the Road Commissioner questions unfortunately come to us anyways, and we then refer them to the Road Commissioners as it is. So this just basically reverses what's happened before and makes it a better setup for everybody involved. And I apologize to the existing Road Commissioners. We are not picking on them.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Howard Smith, Precinct 4. I was a past Road Commissioner. I was asked a number of years ago by someone in town because of my knowledge from running a business for many years and my experience on the fire department. So I chose to go on. I will say, I was a little upset because after I went to a couple of the meetings, I found out there'd been an issue going on in town for over five years, and that was five years ago. So this issue had been going on for over 10 years, and it still has not been resolved to this day. The Road Commissioners at the time, many times, we made motions, they were voted on, and there was no action done. It was sent to the selectmen, it went to town council and so forth, there were some rulings. It still has not been done. And I know you did your job, Rich. I don't mean to point to you. We just got nowhere. We were spinning our wheels. And I was going to speak a little more in favor of this, but, and I hate to do it, but we have three of these officials here this evening. The police chief, director of municipal maintenance, who David has done one hell of a job over the years to provide for the Road Commissioners, who had no budget whatsoever. And yet, there was an establishment back in 2010 where the Road Commissioners were supposed to receive approximately $5,000 a year. That got dropped somewhere else. But right now, if these three officials are willing to back down, I'm willing to back off because I know it was very difficult for me to get there on four o'clock on a Monday afternoon.
30 seconds.
Believe me, I would have rather been in New Hampshire piling firewood. But, you know, if they're willing to back down, I'm willing to back off. I respect their judgment.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on this article?
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
Marsha Joseph, Precinct 6. My question is, if the Road Commission is dissolved, what happens with the issues that are currently ongoing? We live in Wareham Lake Shore Drive. We had a November of 2022 approval that has still not been done in our community, and we've been called back and called back.
Is there someone that's able to answer the question? Yes, Mr. Slaven?
Whatever sits with the Road Commissioners when the change comes, if it does, we inherit it immediately and it goes on to our agenda.
So we have an approval from November of '22. Is it something I present to you now? If it gets dissolved, it's going to take six months for the Attorney General to approve your decision of dissolve.
No, the Attorney General would probably take us anywhere from 90 to 120 days. That's the system. We can't get around that.
Okay.
But as soon as that is done, then we would basically inherit it. Before that's done, the Road Commissioners most likely would sit and meet until that point in time because they would still be in office. We would not be.
So we'd still be going to the Monday meetings?
Absolutely. And then you'd be coming to a Tuesday meeting with the Board of Selectmen if it's still outstanding.
And how long will your decisions take at that point?
It's a, well, I can't tell you what because I don't know what it is.
Well, I know, but you don't want to come in and then say three months later.
So I think his answer, I think his answer is that whatever's before the Road Commissioners will go before the Select Board.
As it is now.
As it is now.
Yes.
But we still don't have answers.
You'll have the answers, hopefully, afterwards.
All right. Thank you.
Is anything further to be said on the motion on Article 16? Seeing no one else standing, we'll go to a vote on the motion on Article 16, which requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 16, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating no.
No.
It passes by a majority on a voice vote. Seeing that we have concluded all the business which is on the warrant, entertain a motion to dissolve the town meeting.
Madam Moderator, prior to the motion, I, personal privilege, I would like to have the body give you a rousing commendation for a job well done.
Now entertain a motion to dissolve the town meeting. Is there a second? Second. All in favor, please signify by stating aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you, and have a nice evening.